Around six oh six and today is March the sixth. We have two meetings tonight. We have a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh one. We also have a workshop, but before we begin, would you please join in.
Tooth flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first order of business tonight is to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero dash one, titled North of the Town in Greensboro for the conveyance of property located at one thirteen South Main Street, Greensboro, Maryland, and identified in the tax records of Caroline County as parcel eight five nine of map zero three zero three. Anybody would like to make any comment?
I don't understand why you're selling if you're trying to put a police department in now, it sounds like.
He said he didn't understand why we were selling if we're trying to put police departments on there, I think that's what he said. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
In the future, can you speak at the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah, if you wanted to, yeah. I just figured you could hear me.
Well, we can hear you with the recording, so it doesn't.
I guess, I guess the biggest thing, you need a timer to know. I guess the biggest thing is, like, obviously you guys are gonna sell it. There's no question about that, you can do what you want anyway, but what's the money gonna be used for? That's the biggest question on everybody's mind is what's the, what exactly is the money gonna go for? Pay off loans, is it gonna go onto something else?
The, what we had discussed before was debt and reserve, kind of like a split, so that kind of.
That's the biggest question.
Yeah.
Everybody keeps asking me about. I mean, you know that.
For water sewer, is that what you're talking about, water sewer reserve?
No.
Um, a little bit of reserve and um, um, some kind of debt payoff. Some of it would be um, water sewer reserve, but it wouldn't be able to be a hundred percent. Yeah.
Because everybody keeps asking me about like.
Nothing frivolous, yep.
So.
I, I think we had discussed a little bit at one of our previous meetings, what the idea was behind, you know, how to spend that money, so. Okay, anybody else, any comments from the public? No, alright, then I will close the public hearing at six oh eight. Alright, so. Now, um, the ordinance that was introduced by Commissioner Robinson, um, and I'll read it again for the record, just to make sure that I'm doing it properly, is that ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero dash one in Norton's, the town of Greensboro, for the conveyance of property located at one thirteen South Main Street, Greensboro, Maryland, identified in the tax records of Caroline County as parcel eight five nine of map zero three zero three. And that this property is being sold for one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars cash. Alright, so I'll be looking for the council for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero dash one. Any further discussion? All favor sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, ordinance passed. If you all would sign up for them, please. Alright, at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the workshop. We're here tonight to discuss the opposed budget for Public Works, so. Mr. Tammy?
You want to go up?
Sure.
Alright, uh, we'll start with Public Works, then of course, works is included in that. We're in a big package here. Overall, it's a twelve and a half percent increase, um, which majority of it comes from the highway taxes that are used for repairing paved streets. Nothing's re, other than that, nothing has really changed as far as on the revenue side. We'll go down to uh, the expenditures. The salary and personnel, uh, we budgeted in uh, for a two thousand dollar COLI increase in the bonuses, uh, which is two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars total.
Brandon, do me, do me a favor real quick.
Yes, sir.
Let's go back up to revenue real quick, alright?
Okay.
So I guess our trash contract is up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it says. RFP week of two ten, I guess we're gonna send them out? What, that's, that's been two ten, alright?
Yeah, Lindsay has it tomorrow, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it went out to Lindsay to get approved and go out.
Okay.
Roughly, uh, with the current trash company, it, it, we bid it on what they said that their increase would be, which is a uh, three percent increase in how we got it in here. If the town was to leave the trash alone and just keep charging people what they're charging them now, the town would cover with the increase, would cover twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars of the cost.
So when are the RFP due back, do you know, the bids back?
Um, I don't have the date that I put in there. I have, um, April. Mid-April that I asked to have them back, assuming that's if Lindsay approves those dates. I, because I told her I'd like to have them well advanced this time.
So right now, we're anticipating the revenue being the same, don't you think?
Yes.
Alright, alright, thank you, Brandon.
Yeah. Also, just to elaborate on payroll, uh, we did do an increase on the on-call pay. Especially considering that whoever's on-call is going out now seven days a week, as far as making sure that you're checking pump stations and, uh, we actually got a little bit more paperwork that's involved every month now on that, so.
So you do want to increase?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
It's bringing out to a hundred and five dollars, which is fifteen dollars a day for being on-call. The increase would be twenty-five dollars a day.
She just want to increase the stuff.
Yeah.
Other than that, there's really no increase, uh, we're actually on this line of one lot of stuff as we, uh, currently are so far in the budget, so.
Brandon, I want you to look to, is it, is that fair? For being on-call?
Well, we pay them their hourly rate too. Might just get their stipend to, because they have to be available and accessible.
Alright, as well make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that we're comparable to other towns.
Yeah, so, so when the guys come out, they, they get a two-hour minimum to be on-call.
We pay them time and a half, but it's, it's just the, the inconvenience of having to be accessible.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, I just want to make sure.
Any other questions on that section?
Actually, right on the line, that's good.
Um, I actually should.
Somewhere, yeah.
Like that, the state.
Retirement, and Lindsay, it was budgeted five thousand eight hundred dollars, and now we only have three hundred fifty dollars there.
I keep the breakdowns for the, um, in the system. They, if you take that line and above there, the retirement benefits, and then compare them to the previous, the, the, in total.
You work out the same.
Yeah.
It's just bringing in a little bit more.
It's just the coding part of it, yeah.
Uh, next thing, we got community support. We left that the same, which is basically just the Christmas lights and the community support, uh, community support as far as for youth sponsorships.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the next, next item would be the contractual. There's two and a half percent decrease on that. Um, one thing I would like to work, uh, just revisit is just making sure that there's no kind of increase would be the exterminator. Uh, there might actually be a little bit of a decrease, especially because we took a building away, so. That's at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five fifty.
Do you want to check them? Did we put all of them over here?
Not all.
The bulk hauling that we do, uh, ten thousand dollars, is that, is that about what we end up paying each year? Seeing twenty-four, we only end up paying three thousand and twenty-three, twenty-seven hundred, so I just.
That, that's because there's, there's a little bit of coding error back then. It was put in with the regular trash pickup, because we were paying tip and fees. Out of that, this is just, it's now more working down. That dumpster that's out there is paid for a year around. We use it for bulk pickup. Like this, this past bulk pickup, we ended up with two dumpster fulls. And when you hit dumpster full, you pay the tonnage, so that ten thousand dollars, that's for.
The nighttime collector didn't come back, you said, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They came, they came.
But, um, so it's just, now it's more, instead of putting it down there with a trash haul, and it's actually, it's on its own.
Okay.
Brandon, what are dues and subscriptions? Contractual?
Contractual. Uh, the dues and subscriptions, so that's the next line. Let me just make sure, is there any other questions in the?
I thought we were here, I'm sorry.
In the contractual? No, so to answer your question, in the contracts and subscriptions, uh, total is a twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars total. Uh, the dues and subscriptions, that's for Maryland Water Association, that's for temporary licenses. Um, there's a few other small little.
Those equipment certifications you guys do, that you get all the line of stuff, is that where this is included?
Um, on that one, there were some of them that got in there, uh, the ones that it needed for, like, every couple of years. Like, like hazmat would be on every, on, that's with the chlorinated gas. So that's what, just the dues and subscriptions.
Okay.
Um, any other questions on that? Operating expenses, total fifty-five hundred, went down thirteen percent. Um, the internet, uh, a lot of it is from overpart. Web expenses, and then the computer-related, just to elaborate on that one, is just, they took a whole of everybody and just split it up into each department. So that's why, if you look at what we currently use, that's why the number's higher.
We're reevaluating the distribution of the expenses because of Public Works and things like that is not as large of a percentage as most of the.
Any other questions? Uh, so we got communications and utility, seven and a half percent, or seven point eight percent decrease, fifty-one thousand seven hundred. Um, ultimately, the increase with electric, uh, when we, when this was printed out, the new electric bills haven't, not been posted, but they almost tripled because of the, um, Del Marvin. So we did, we just put a little buffer in there on that one, just be on the safe side. The heating fuel should go down because we had them, now we got the mini splits to help with the heat.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, that, that, you lost. So the fifty-one seven hundred, that is not correct? Of the street lighting or the, uh? Because this was printed out before the new electric bill came out?
No, no. He's saying the significant increase was because they put a buffer in for the electric, it tripled, so.
Forty.
Forty.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure.
What about the cell phone, Brandon?
So the cell phones is actually put in with the telephone.
Yeah.
They didn't break it.
No, because it's all under one bill.
All three for us, so. Um, the, hopefully, in the future, the gas and the diesel, uh, hopefully, we're looking at the decrease on that, now that we got the new cars, that we can go everywhere, and I mean, some of the, sometimes we've been getting gas and it's, it's ten cents cheaper here than it was where we were getting it at before, so that, that may hopefully for next to the year. Um, and the street lighting is the same, uh, we still, that number for what we've actually used right now is low. We have not had the annual twenty lights installed yet, that probably won't be done until close to May, so.
So the street lighting, what does that cover? The installation of new lights?
The installation of new lights and all, we picked the town place where all the power and street lights. There's certain, there's certain meters around town that, uh.
So that meter separate from the other light?
Yeah, so hopefully by the time it's all said and done, once, once all these lights get switched out to LEDs, hopefully. I mean, we've seen a de, small decrease over the last couple of years, but hopefully, once the rest of these lights get done. I think there's like, I want to say there's close to like sixty, seventy lights left that need to be done. Once they get converted over, hopefully.
Well, I see you dropped to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll, we'll continue to drop that. Any questions? Alright, uh, regular maintenance, uh, like I said, um, it's, it's, there's a big increase on that. It's up to a hundred and seventy-four thousand seventy-nine dollars, and majority of that comes from the street expense, um, which is the highway tax share of revenue. And to elaborate a little bit on that, our goal is to, I got a list of the, all the areas that have not been paved, and, uh, I'm going back and revisit the ones that are, have got a little bit more trouble than others, and hopefully, our goal is to hit something up there to spring, get a couple of street feet.
So are you hearing anything, Tammy, with the highway taxes and user feed coming back from the state? Has there been any talk about them decreasing that and going where the center having such a problem with the state?
What if it just ends with a new bill where they're gonna tax every service?
Uh, they're gonna tax it, like, tax so it is and everything.
If you use an accountant, they're gonna tax you for using an accountant and the accountant for being used.
Um, one, one, a couple of things that you'll notice, one, the maintenance, the equipment maintenance and repairs, um, a lot of our trucks are two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, so they don't have warranties or anything. This, this past year, kind of eaten up a little bit on repairs, uh. So.
Well, speaking on that, I know that you mentioned something about it today, but you're working on a long-term capital LA plan so that we can.
Start a replacement cycle?
Yeah, looking for work.
Do you have a preventive maintenance plan?
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing here, sidewalk repairs, uh, beans we, long since then, we still have the twenty-five hundred for this year. Our goal is to try to get some of the major repairs done. That's why, right now, we haven't used any, because it's been called out and we haven't been able to fix them a couple of areas. Same with the landscaping, there hasn't been much use because of COVID, we haven't got that part yet.
Well, we got four thousand dollars for mosquito control.
County.
That is, that is what the county.
County charges us.
Yeah, I know, but we didn't spend anything in twenty twenty-four according to this report. Did they not spray it or what?
Yeah, we didn't use anything.
Twenty twenty-four actually was used.
It was actually supposed to have been the thirty, where it says thirty-nine eleven, that's what the price was.
That was the actual?
Hmm.
Okay, so the four's in line then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's.
I know you don't have the control over it, I'm just, I saw that.
That's if they don't send out another notice that says that they increased, because I think it went from like two thousand to almost four thousand.
I'm sure the spray gets expensive for them.
Yeah. Any other questions on that section? Alright, supplies and equipment is a thirty-three percent decrease to ten thousand four hundred. Overall, we lowered price, equipment, furniture, don't really use that much unless something tears up. And we decreased a lot on the tools and stuff because, uh, we're pretty much almost fully stopped with every tool, every.
Because we use the R P I class.
Yes. But other than that, everything's running on. Any questions? Alright, now, operating expenses, other, uh, is thirty-nine hundred and thirty dollars, premium increase with additional increase. That's where we're at, uh, we've been reviewing ill, insurance policy with Legit, and they, they were actually supposed to come out this past week, but they haven't, uh, they had flight cancellation or something, so he's gonna be coming out and revisiting some of our equipment that we have and update the insurance policy on it.
Well, they go out to the plants and to the parks and that.
Yeah. Protecting investment, I think.
How come we spent ten thousand four hundred and seventy-eight so far this year? That, it's highlighted in yellow, so that must have been a knowledge, I guess, right?
That was, um, how did we say that?
Equipment?
Yeah, there was that, there was that, um, the increase in the premiums, there was a.
The increase in the premiums were for, were for the, uh, insurance for one of the.
But if we spent ten four so far, it's thirty-nine hundred, we're gonna cut it next year.
I think so, but we're gonna go through everything, especially after the guy gets, goes in.
That's, that's the only thing, I mean, and there was some, some things on that, the ten thousand, that need to be reallocated.
Okay.
On bank fees, we don't have no bank fees, so that was, that where it says that we actually used it, that might, that was just a coding error. I might put it on the public works instead of, uh, town hall. Projects and grants, uh, we, we ended up with thirty, we put thirty-five hundred dollars on there, um, and that expense ultimately fortified that over in Chopteck Parks. They currently both have to upgrade it, uh, the last company that was out there, they were, A, they were a lot cheaper, but they weren't giving you good service, the porta pots were filled up to brim, and B, they were not handicap accessible, um, so. And the gray ran out, they had like a, some kind of spark screen, uh, for porta pots that gray ran dry, so we got two porta pots out there, they're cleaning weekly, um, and it's total of thirty-five hundred dollars for a year. Travel and training, uh, decrease from five thousand down to four thousand, um. Some of that training is through the M M L, some of it's through Maryland Water, so it's an area a little bit with the subscriptions, uh, but we just, on the backside, we'll just downgrade it a little bit.
No, there's nothing in there except the handle come up here.
Yeah, that's why.
And you graduated M M L this year, right?
Yeah, hopefully now I can move on to torchbearer, that's, that's all. Ultimately. Um, which leads us to the final item, which is reserve funds, and you should put a reserve fund of roughly twenty-one thousand.
Which we will dip into that if the insurance needs to be adjusted. And Brandon's putting together stuff for, uh, capital?
Yeah. For, like I said, we're working on more of a three to five-year plan on, on some of the equipment that's no warranties, that we didn't need a substantial repairs and, uh.
Brandon, I got one question for you, buddy.
Well, maybe my dad.
Or his care budget, right?
Yeah.
Lot of decreases. You sure you're good? I don't want you to feel pressured from anybody, from the citizens, from us, are you good to run your department? You have a lot of decreases and a lot of items are going up out of the world like that. Are you good? Because I don't want to have to ride Peter to pay Paul when it comes to the end of the year.
Well, I feel, I feel like we're pretty good, I mean, and I'm going right off of the numbers that we've done this year, so. Um, we, we sat down for three days going through this budget. As far as we compared what we've spent so far this year, what is, what should, like, you, you think the loan numbers that we have, all of them have been updated, there's been a lot of, over the last year, there's been a lot of.
I just want to make sure that you're not pressured. You feel that you have to cut your budget, okay, to make people happy. I want you to be able to run your department, okay?
I'm just saying, looking at, I'm doing the math here, just trying to figure out, um, his total budget is six eighty-nine seven and nine. But you're only bringing in three hundred and thirty-one thousand in revenue, so are we getting money from him? Is it?
No, general.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
General. It's, it's, the town hall, public works, and the P D, all, at the end will balance out.
Alright, just want to make sure we got enough.
Scared as it.
Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Okay.
But overall, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty happy with, with the stuff that we, we have, the direction that we're going with, uh, on a lot of expenditures that we had, uh, I'm pretty happy with it, so.
Well, you did a good job on your budget, thank you.
Well, I'll tell you, so thi, this was probably the first year that I've actually dealt a lot more hands in on it, and, uh, Amy.
A lot.
A lot. Uh, but it was, like I said, it, three days we spent making sure that we had everything for this year, so that way we could put together something. And if we, there's a couple of things that we knew we could maybe decrease on, and some things that we definitely cannot decrease on, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for presenting.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to ask the person that's asking for money, how they're gonna spend it.
That was good.
And Tammy try to explain this. Thank you.
And like I said, ultimately, we want to, with the highway user phone, I just want to express that, uh, that money, as long as we get it, like they say we're getting it, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, our goal is to spend about a hundred thousand to get the certain streets repaved, but leave, because you're always gonna have a water leak or a sewer leak, so, um, save about fifty thousand more towards.
Brandon, we're trying, we're trying to make our streets better, we gotta have a better relationship with state highway, so we can get Main Street and Sunset Street, right?
That is awesome.
That's it.
You're right.
You got basketball, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah.
Alright, so our next scheduled. All right, so our next scheduled budget workshop is for Thursday, March the thirteenth, to go with the police department, correct?
Yes.
Okay, at six o'clock.
Somebody threw me off and was saying that the next one was the twentieth.
That's the regular name, that's the regular name.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At six thirty-six, second?
Second.
Hold favor?
All right.
Get out of here. Good luck.